Okay.
Good afternoon, it's 2:00 PM on August 3rd, 2021. This is Laguna Beach Unified School District Special School Board Meeting, Board Policy Workshop, and it's called Order. Since we're virtual, number one on the agenda is procedural note for how to make public comment to take place under Agenda Items 4A for each in the series of policies. In order to provide enough time for board members to read written public testimony, the forum closed today, August 3rd at 9:00 AM. This takes us to number two on the agenda. Victoria, can you please call the old established forum?
Member Kelly?
President.
Clerk Osborne?
Here.
President Normandin?
Present.
And members Perry and Bickers have not yet arrived.
So this moves us to open session 3B, and Kelly's going to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Whoops, Kelly, you were muted.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the oath for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Kelly. But now just to 3C, the adoption agenda. Jason, are there any changes to the agenda?
No changes.
Can I have a motion to adopt it in a second?
Moved.
Second.
Thank you. All right, Victoria, can you please conduct a roll call?
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Clerk Osborne?
Yes.
President Normandin?
Yes. So the motion carries 302. This moves us on to item 4A. Victoria, is there anyone wishing to speak on the review and discussion of board policies in the 3,000 series this afternoon?
There are, no, there are not.
Thank you, Victoria. Before I open the policy discussions, a quick comment for listeners, it has to be all of us who participate today. I made a full statement on July 19th of the special meeting of what we're working to accomplish in the series of special meetings, explained our policy norms. So to provide the maximum amount of time focused on the policies, I ask you to refer to the recordings for background information if needed. Over the next two and a half hours, the board will review policies in a 3,000, 4,000 series, and one policy BP 6158, independent studies. The board is conducting this meeting in coordination with executive cabinet members who have all reviewed the policies within their practice area to ensure compliance with policy through internal procedures, processes, contracts, plans, et cetera, as well as they've worked with our attorney, Mark Frazee, to ensure the understanding of all the legal implications and ensure the compliance with the laws that these policies are established upon. We're so appreciative of all their work, that everyone's put in preparing for this comprehensive policy review as the first investment in understanding. Unlike our regular meetings, Mark attends these special meetings to support the legal unity and understanding of our policies. Please feel free to ask him questions immediately in the meeting. The last meeting, we all benefited from his overall knowledge of law. The policies are most relevant from his legal perspective, input on suggested edits to language, and what we should be considering in hiring and placing policies. So Mark, please just jump in as you see fit. We only have three minutes per policy. Must be mindful of each other and the time to get through all the 33 policies. Victoria will announce more in three minutes after each policy opens, so we balance our time. If maybe we can come back to policies like we did last meeting. When the policy is open, please raise your zoom hand and unmute. If you are the only one with a zoom hand raised, rest your question to the person in the practice area, Mark or Jason. And if there are multiples in hands, I'll do my best to recognize them as they move up to the top of the screen. And to allow all members opportunity to ask a question, please only ask one question on the way you're zooming in. If there needs to be discussion, please jump in, so we can support each other to articulate changes, the suggested policy languages. And with that, we open with the 3,000 series, business and non-instructural operations, very important board policy 3,001, financial reserves, and Jason, you have before.
Well, Jeff's actually going to manage the majority of these, so I'm going to pass it to Jeff, and he will walk through these, because these are all in his area of expertise.
Thank you, Dr. Lori. This first policy is a unique policy. We're recommending that the board replace this policy with the new policy 3100, which was reviewed later. It includes the same information, but CSBA does not have the 3,001 policy. They do have the 3100, which is why we're recommending to replace it with that. So as a CSBA updates or templates with new laws and regulations, it'll be easily identified at that time.
Are there any questions? See any? So with that understanding, we're going to move on to board policy 3,002, investments, and Jeff, you have the foregiving.
Thank you, very similar to the last policy. We're recommending to replace this policy 3,002 with 3,430, 3430, which we will look at later, is again. And again, it's an update to the investment policy through CSBA. It's just a different number and unique.
Thanks, Jeff. Are there any questions? With that, I move on that order. With that, we're going to move to policy 3,003, and Jeff, it's you again.
3,003 is very similar to 3,100 in the sense that this information has been transposed to the new board policy 3,100, which will be reviewed later. There are no changes proposed to this language, other than putting in the new budget policy.
Any questions? Any hands? Okay, with that agreement, we're going to move on to board policy 3,004.
Can I ask Clerk Osborne to mute herself? I'm getting that robot sound again.
Is that where that, okay.
We'll try and see if that works.
It is gone, thank you. Okay, so Jeff, the floor is yours with policy 3,004, use of district.
Yes, similar in the sense that CSBA doesn't have this policy. However, we're recommending to replace this policy with an administrative regulation, which is 3512. It does match current practice with having to do all district equipment, not just vehicles, in terms of lending out and use with staff or potential stakeholders or community use groups.
And, and is that common practice? Is that what, to have AR and not have a policy with the?
I would say it's common in the fact that CSBA does not have this policy, but they do have the administrative regulation, which is what we're proposing to update that.
Thank you. Looking for any hands? I don't see any. So with that agreement, we're going to move on to board policy 3,100, which is budget. Jeff, the floor is yours.
Okay, this is a bit more of a robust board policy. It would be new for our district, however, it encompasses a lot of items, all of which are current practice for us, and then includes the policies that were proposed deletion, which is 3,001 and 3,003. So as you begin with the budget development and adoption process, these are statutes laid out in law for us to meet certain requirements of preparing and showing the budget to the public and the board for review and approval. Establishment of the Budget Advisory Committee is consistent with our Joint Fiscal Management Committee that we already have in place. Budget criteria and standards are specific to how we identify within our budget the resources being used and how the allocations are being determined. We get into fund balance, which goes back to board policy 3,003 that we currently have. It's all the same language, including the reserve that's identified in the components of ending fund balance in the budget document and budget book. The authority to commit funds, which we've seen in more recent years, current practice being in the components of ending fund balance, the commitment in fund balance, the most recent example being the 1.5 million committed for the transitional kindergarten program to get it started for the new requirements of the state budget and the law since past. Spending order policy. This is looking at unrestricted, when you look at our budget, you see unrestricted and restricted funds. Typically, we want to spend restricted funds first, because those are required to be spent in the year that they are received. Most commonly, sometimes over a three-year period, however, we always want to spend restricted funds first, leave the unrestricted in general fund. And then the interim review and determination of fund balance classifications is something that's done through the budget process. And then the financial reserves, again, that's an existing policy that we had in, that's been built into 3,100 for us. It still establishes all the different reserves, including the community funded differential, which I know is really important to the board. There's a new section on long-term financial obligations. This is something that when we're looking at what would be a long-term cost, would need to be discussed and approved by the board, which is current practice. And one, the best example I could say of the discussion of long-term obligations would be the other post-employment benefits that we have the Cowper's Trust for, the cert that we refer to, and is reported quarterly from them, and is included in the monthly financial report to the board. Budget amendments, this is a requirement in law. If there's a major revision that's taken, required within the budget, so the governor passes the state budget, if it has a significant impact on revenues or expenditures to the budget that the board had adopted by the end of June of that current fiscal year, we have 45 days to revise that budget. We have not had to do that, and we do not have to do that again this year, however, it is something that is required for all districts, should there be a material change. And then, of course, there's all the new legal references that are a combination of what was included in the 3,100, as well as 3,100 and 3,300.
Thank you for that comprehensive. Rebecca, on that, Jeff, did you have to adjust the CSBA policies so that it replaced the other ones that we had, or is this the change everyone's made, or?
Yeah, so this is a, the budget section is really just reporting on the requirements that we already abide by. Where we did make the significant changes are adding our current policies 3,100 and 3,300, so that we could delete them and have it an all-encompassing budget policy being 3,100. One thing that I would note, and this is going to come up later too, and I apologize for missing it. Where it's referenced, community or basic aid, it should say community funded, and I don't think we caught it everywhere, but it should be community funded district. I know we caught it with the community funded differential, but we'll make sure that that gets updated.
And we're at 3.
Thank you. Are there any hands? Are there any quick questions? Thanks for that again, Jeff. With that, we're going to move on to board policy 3,110, transfer of funds, and Jeff, it's you.
Again, this is a new policy, but it is practice for what we do. In terms of any transfer of funds being into or out of the general fund, it does require board action as well as a resolution to do so, and that's what this stipulates.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Okay, with that agreement, we're going to move this one forward as well. Next is board policy 3,110, sorry, transfer of funds. No, we just did a 3230, which is in all places, federal grant funds.
Yes, again, this is a new policy for our district, however, it is practice. Federal grant funds come with many strings attached, as well as very strict reporting requirements, which we do abide by. The most recent example of these funds could be the COVID relief funds from the federal government, which we're doing quarterly reports for, as well as board reports and reports to the California Department as required. You'll notice that the last sentence of the policy, we did change it from a specific timeline. I believe they had stipulated 60 days. We just changed it to a specified timeline as required for final submission, because some of the grants that we receive are, the reports are due within 30 days. So it's not a 60-day timeline. So rather than tie our hands with the exact number of days in the policy, we changed it just to say we're going to meet the requirements of the grants that we receive.
Thank you. Kelly, go ahead.
Jeff, do we have similar reporting requirements for state-funded grants?
We do. Not as strict typically as the federal grants, but it is with the grant reporting from the state level. There are reports required usually annual for them, and those are part of our larger audit, the end of year audit. The auditors tend to look at those, those grants specifically, because they do lay out requirements for spending and the reporting that are spelled out that we have to abide by.
Would it make sense or not make sense to include the state and federal grants in one board policy?
I think because this is specific to federal grants, it would be better to keep it there. As far as the state reporting goes, those are something like LCFF, you know, any reports to the board and have to submit to the county and then to the state for approval for even the COVID relief funds from the state also require very similar recording. But I think it would be better just to keep the federal and state separate, because the reporting is different and unique to themselves versus trying to tie them together in a single policy.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Standing. So the, with that agreement, we're going to move this forward. The next policy is board policy 3250. This is did I drop ahead of you? 3250 is transportation fees. LBSD policy is current. No recommended changes. Are there any questions? And Kelly, you still have your hand up, so I don't know if it's a new hand up or old hand up. Okay, I don't see any. So with, we're going to, with that agreement, we're going to move forward. The next policy is board policy 3260. It's fees and charges. And Jeff, the floor is yours.
Thank you. So this is an existing policy, but CSBA had an update, and you see the changes listed in here with the green new text and the red proposed deletion of the existing policy. Again, this is all current practice, and it's also required by law in all of these situations. One area of note is there is a much more robust complaint section in this policy. It's been expanded from the initial policy, and that's the largest update that we received from CSBA.
Mark, go ahead.
Yeah, I offered some proposed additions, or a proposed addition to this policy. Victoria, if you could scroll down a bit. Not that far. It's all showing the same color. It's okay, right there. The, the last sentence of the main paragraph you see on that page, it starts with the prohibition against student fees. I have found that there is some confusion sometimes on the issue of student participation in voluntary fundraising activity. The, the law says that that, that the prohibition on fees does not prohibit voluntary participation in fundraising activities. The intent of the law is that students can't be required to raise a certain amount of money in order to participate in a sport or orchestra, or even enroll in a class. That what I added is a clarification that the law does allow required attendance at a fundraising event by students, as long as they are not required to raise a certain amount of money. I typically use two examples of that. One from my own history, when, when our daughters were in high school, their high school baseball team had an annual fundraiser where they sold Christmas trees. And when we would go pick up the Christmas tree, the entire baseball team was there to help load the trees and on top of cars and things like that. I think a coach can say in that example, to be on the baseball team, you're required to attend practices unless excused. You're retired, required to be at games unless excused, and you are required to attend this fundraising event that helps raise money. So they can be required to basically offer their labor, just like they do on the, the field of play by attending, where across the line is if you say, and in order to be on this team, you have to sell 10 Christmas trees. You have to raise $200. So this authorizes attendance. And then another one where I've seen it is, I actually had a student one time who was in an orchestra, not in Laguna Beach Unified, but said, you can't, to the teacher, you can't punish me for not attending the concert on Friday night, because it's actually going to raise money, because we're selling tickets, and it's, and you're, it's going to raise money. So again, attendance, you can mandate attendance, you can't mandate. So that's what, that is what that is, that addition is designed to clarify.
Thank you for that clarification. I didn't understand the difference, so I appreciate that. Any other questions? Jeff, did you have any additional comments on this policy? Okay.
We lost Jeff, so.
Give me this chat for a second, okay.
I don't know, he's not showing up anymore, so on the screen, so.
People, people often check out when I start talking, so.
He literally checked out, they're gone, so. We can keep moving forward, so.
Well, Jim's got his hand up, so Jim.
Okay, sorry.
You're muted.
Is there any, this policy, is there any exceptions for religious activities such as if I'm an Orthodox Jew and you're requiring me to attend orchestra practice on Friday night? Can I be excused from that?
Yes, you'd be excused.
Yeah, that's a, that's a, any kind of attendance, whether school attendance, there are some ed code provisions on that, and the same would apply to extracurricular activities, both for employees and for students. You have to reasonably accommodate bona fide religious beliefs and practices.
We're at three.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. And Kelly, do you want to come back to this, or you want to ask real quick?
I just wanted to ask real quick, Mark, does this cover when our, some of our field trip fees, if we don't collect enough to hold or run the field trip? I'm thinking of one that's kind of costly, because it's a multi-day trip, that the district reserves the right to cancel the trip?
Yes, field trips is, there's a list of about, I think, 18 at last count permissible fees. One of them is field trips, so long as no student is denied participation based on lack of sufficient funds. And so that can, that can result in some issues related to an individual student being able to attend, but none of that at any point undercuts the authority to just say, we didn't raise enough money, so we're not taking this trip, or we're not playing in this tournament, because we didn't raise enough money, whatever the case may be.
That's perfect, thank you.
And Jim, do you have another question? Put your hands up.
And I, I, I should also, I'm sorry, I, I've forgotten this. You'll see a couple of points where I deleted the word board and put district in it, because most fees are authorized by law. Field trips might be a bad example, because in most districts, field trips come to the border, and many districts, they come to the board for approval. But there are things like a an art teacher, or a computer design teacher can charge students for the reasonable cost of materials to produce art, for example, in an art class, if the student wants to keep the materials, that they're, what they've created. And those kinds of things don't come to the board. They don't even typically come to the principal of the school. And so this, by saying the board may approve fees, it implies that no fee can ever be charged unless it's come to the board for approval, and that's, that's not the case operationally. So I just did that, just to clarify that.
Okay. Thank you for catching that as well. Okay, with the agreement, we're going to move this one back, and this moves us to board policy 3270, the sales and disposable books. It's a current policy. There are no recommended changes. Are there any questions? Seeing that, with that agreement, we'll move to board policy 3280, sale or lease of district-owned real property. And Jason is looking for, oh, there, and Jeff, the floor is yours.
My apologies, Eric, kicked off. This would be a new policy for, for our district. It has to do with the sale or lease of district-owned land or real property, and it's all, this is modeling current law. It's just something we didn't have in a board policy. There's a lot to it, but essentially, it's setting up a committee to go over the sale or lease of the, the property or district-owned equipment or real property, and then the resolution that's required by the board, and then the bid process and acceptance thereof.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Any comments? Okay. With that agreement, oops, go ahead, Jim. You're muted.
So this, this, I think I'm, can you hear me?
I can, yeah.
Hello?
We can hear you.
This would cover, this would cover us if the city wants to take over our bus parking lot.
Potentially, if, if it involves a sale or lease provision of whatever agreements reached, then yes, it would. However, there may be some other scenario that I'm not thinking of, since we haven't gone through that process with the city yet, but yes, under the assumption that it would lead to the sale or lease of our land, and yes. Thank you.
And on the counter, Jeff, so the sale and lease and, and thought, they're not taking it over, we would get something in return. Sale lease, it would cover all of that in concept, both sides of that.
Yeah, and that'd be a lot of the work of the committee, and then making sure that, you know, no district resources are going to losing or selling our land. We would need to get something of fair market value in return.
Thank you. With that agreement, we'll move that forward, and that moves us to board policy 3290. It is, it's gift strands and quest, which is also current. There are no recommended changes. Are there any questions? I don't see any. So board policy, let's move just to board policy 3,300, and Jeff, the floor is yours.
Yes, and, and the board is probably very familiar with this policy in practice. It's not new for us, they're having to do with bids, public bids specifically. But it would be a new policy for us. It does match what we currently do, and it models existing law for public contract code and bidding.
Are there any questions? This is one of those vital policies that popped up with CSBA when they were talking about the COVID, all the policies that are important for COVID. I think there are 40 of them or so. Thank you for bringing that forward. Okay, with that agreement, we're going to move to the next policy. Board policy 3,311 is bids, and Jeff, the floor is yours.
Very similar. It is following the public contract code with regards to bids, and the award of a new policy for us, but again, the existing practice that we've been following throughout the entire time here. It is law.
Looking for hands, I don't see any. Okay, with that agreement, we're going to move to the next policy, board policy 3312. This is contracts. This one is also current. There's no recommended changes. Are there any questions or comments? I don't see any. So with that agreement, we're going to move to the next policy, which is board policy 3314, and Jeff, the floor is yours.
Again, new policy for our district, fairly short and sweet, but it does get to the crux of what we want to do with our payment for goodness services being expeditious, and to take advantage of those early payments, if there are discounts available, to pursue those.
We appreciate you doing that. Your team doing that. Okay, are there any questions? Okay, with that agreement, we'll bring this policy forward. The next policy is BP 3320. Jeff, the floor is yours.
A new policy again, this having to do specifically with claims and actions against the district. It would be new. This does match what we, what our current practice. Our primary person that we deal with, with regards to any claims against our school district is our insurance provider, A.S.K.I.P. I'm sure the board's familiar with them. And it would be something that, again, we don't have, but CSBA has in their templates, and it's been updated to match our current practice and law.
Okay, and I see Mark's hand up, because I also see this policy group from the first time I looked at it.
Yes, the, the highlighted portion I added, and there were some policies when I made amendments, it didn't highlight them in green like the last one. So I just did the, the yellow highlighting here. So I just did the, the yellow highlighting here. If you recall our last meeting, the, the proposal was to move board policy one thousand six to this, to just have one policy on claims. The law provides for two different claim policies, one strictly based on the government code. And the government code has a list of types of claims that you, where you don't have to file a claim with the public agency. The second type is best here, government code section nine thirty-five. It allows a public agency to say, for those, for some or all of those claims in the government code, where you don't have to file a claim in our public entity and our agency, we do expect claims to be filed for those. So this, this is, I believe, CSBA language from the board policy one thousand six, but if the district wants to continue that, then it should be incorporated into this policy.
I like that that's clean. Thank you, Mark, for doing that. Are there any questions? I'm looking for hands. I don't see any. Thanks again, so with that agreement, we'll move forward to the next policy, which is board policy thirty-three fifty, which is travel expenses. LBSD policy is current, so there's no recommended changes, if there's any questions, though. See any, with that agreement, we'll move to the next policy, which is board policy thirty-four hundred, management of the district assets and accounts, and that is Jeff.
Thank you, very straightforward, how we track and designate capital assets is in this new policy, as well as the internal controls that are used for fraud prevention, again, these are current practice, but it's good to spell it out, the board policy, but it, so that it's always on the top of our minds that anything over five hundred dollars is tracked and maintained, and that is part of our audit in terms of our asset management. And then the internal controls is also part of the audit, but it's also important, just as good practice in the business office for our district and operational safeguards.
I agree more, are there any questions or comments? I don't see any, that, with that agreement, we're gonna move on to the next policy.
And that one, I'm gonna take out the he, she, that.
Oh.
It's her, and I'll fix that.
Thank you very much, and thanks for all this for doing. Appreciate. With that, we'll move on, if Victoria makes that adjustment, we'll move on to board policy thirty-four thirty, which is investing. And Jeff, the floor is.
Okay, thank you, we, we initially spoke about earlier, board policy three thousand two. This would replace that policy, it is very similar in the sense that it identifies all the different investment strategies and policies that would be in place. Should we, should the board elect to move forward with this, essentially providing that the chief business official, current myself, would have the authority to invest funds with board approval, that also could be taken away with board action outside of the county treasury. We don't currently do this, other than we do use the county treasury, which is addressed in here. And we do provide those quarterly reports to the board of the, the investment in the county treasury, which is very conservative. And we have not gone outside of that, but should we do that, this lays out the procedures that we would go about establishing a committee, the board's oversight and ability to retract and need the authority to invest funds.
Thank you for bringing this forward, are there any questions from board members? Or Mark? I don't see any. So, oh, go ahead, Kelly.
Just ask my question, is there a limit, a dollar limit in here, Jeff?
There is a dollar limit in terms of the minimum of twenty-five thousand dollars or more that need to be reported. But the board could establish whatever thresholds within the approval authority going forward. But, yeah, as of now, like I said, we don't currently practice any sort of investment strategies outside of our, our county treasury that we bring to the board.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, with that agreement, we're gonna move to the next policy, which is thirty-four fifty-two, student activity funds.
This is a new policy for us, having to do with specifically the student activity funds, ASP. These are part of our general fund, and this is general in the sense that the funds need to be received and allocated for specific purposes to support the student activities. And one thing that I will note for the board is that there are changes coming regarding associated student body accounts, they are going to be brought into the general fund more closely audited. So this is general enough that it wouldn't require a change as we go through those changes, which is why we're bringing it forward. However, it does help us express the importance of management of those funds, which we know is another, another resource for us to support the activities of our students at all the schools.
Great learning experience. Shows up in our audit log, go ahead, Jim.
I, I, I totally agree with this policy, because this is one of the areas that the auditors have given us a hard time of years. And it's been a hard thing for, I know, the fiscal officer to, to be on top of.
More.
It's an area of opportunity.
Area of opportunity, it's awesome. With that agreement, we're gonna move to the next policy, which is board policy thirty-four seventy, and Jeff, the floor is yours. Oh, I'm sorry, no, thirty-four seventy, there is no change, no recommended changes, it's current, so there are any questions? I don't see, okay, so with that agreement, we'll move to the next policy, which is board policy thirty-five ten, green school operations, so glad you're bringing this forward.
Thank you, yes, you know, we've, we've done a great job as a district, I think, establishing sustainable operations and procedures. And these next few policies address that at the board level, they're all new for the board. Establishing the importance, and you can see by the title, green school operations, looking at not just supporting the environmental actions, but also keeping in mind the economic impact of the decisions we make as well. A lot of the sustainable practices do free up resources that can be reallocated for student learning, and that's one of the primary focuses of why sustainability is important, as well as the environmental component. So with that, we're bringing forward these new policies for the board to consider and discuss, and take any questions between now and first read.
And with the climate and crisis, they're very important, and I know you've been on top of looking at all kinds of ways to do this, and even encouraging me to talk to legislators and our districts, and so I appreciate that. Like Kelly, any questions?
Thanks, Carol. Yeah, I had a couple of comments and questions maybe for the board to discuss on these. And I agree with you, this is a great new policy to look at. Is there a policy, Jeff, that's in the student-facing board policies that talks about environmental literacy? Some of my comments were related to that, but sometimes I find that those are in a different policy.
That would be Chad, if there is a policy.
Ask that question one more time, sorry.
Do we have a, a board policy and a student-facing policies that relates to environmental literacy?
It's, I'm not sure if it explicitly listed as environmental literacy, but it is within all the science standards and science frameworks explicitly, so, but I don't believe, I don't believe, I would need to double check, but I don't think we have an actual policy on the, as far as like literacy and curriculum.
I'm thinking that details in curriculum would probably not be in policy.
Well, I guess the reason I, I bring it up, because I think this would be a great place to maybe add environmental literacy, not in specifics on curriculum and instruction, just in that that's part of our, our commitment to, to a green schools more holistically. But if it, if it belongs in a better place, or already exists in a better place, then I didn't want to give you my suggested changes.
Yeah, it would belong in the six thousands, so that would, that would be discussion when we come back in the six thousands, where we add it, there is an environmental education board policy that I don't believe we currently have, so it would fit there, so we'll get to that one eventually.
Yeah, because that, you know, I, I think this policy reads really nicely, that would be like one of the other things that I would add to it, or add to a kind of sister policy.
Yeah, you try to keep, so when we do the policies, we try to keep them specific, and so we don't get into what we've been in before, where you have policies in the five thousands that reference things in the two, there are one thousands and the, and the three thousands, and then we have to break them all apart, so. Yeah, it's, right now, just looking at the gamut, shows it as six-one-four-two dot five, environmental education, so. Six-one-twenty-one, so when we get to that one, it'll be, be a good opportune time for us to, it talks about environmental literacy specifically in the very first paragraph, so.
Yeah, exactly, and I think in this one, Victoria, if you scroll down, when you get to twelve, eleven or twelve in there, it talks about incorporating those practices into the educational program, so I think Dr. Verloren, that, that's a great plan to go into sixty-one forty-two, if we want to elaborate on that. And Carol, I have a couple of comments just on the operations piece of it, but I'll let anybody else has comments, I don't want to monopolize the time. We're at three, just so you're aware.
Why don't, why don't we do this, Kelly, why don't we come, we'll have time, why don't we come back to this one, and then if there's other ones, we'll be tied together, that work?
Perfect.
So that will take us, with agreement, takes us to board policy thirty-five eleven, energy and water management, Jeff? Did we lose Jeff? I'm looking.
Yeah, it looks like we lost.
Yeah.
So, well, in the meantime, this essentially would be a new policy for us, it's specific to energy and water management, mostly focus on energy. And, you know, kind of looking at a resource management program, you know, the goal is to obviously do be good stewards, and, you know, we've done a lot of work specific to Prop thirty-nine, and revising, or replacing our AC units and trying to get to the best AC units possible, obviously, we run them pretty regularly, so efficiency is important. And then definitely stormwater management as well, which, you know, that's an important piece, one of the reasons we moved away from the field, with the, the artificial field with the black pellets, and one that doesn't have that, was specific to the fact that during times of rain, we would have some, some of that would pepper on off, so definitely were able to move away from that, and I think that's a, a good policy. Obviously, when we do construction, we have requirements around stormwater prevention, and that's pretty much part for the course in any kind of major construction, so.
We see that. Jason knows all of these policies. Kelly, you have a question?
Jeff, do we have targets that we have to hit, statewide targets that we have to hit on reductions that would belong in this policy, or, or mention of them, do you know?
He's back.
I'm sorry, I got kicked off again.
That's okay, I know Chad was flashing in and out too, something's going on. My question was, do we have statewide reduction targets in energy and or water that we, we have to hit, that, that you're aware of?
Right now, I think it's a goal, fifteen percent reduction specific to water, as far as energy, electricity. That's always a goal, however, I don't think the states put anything out there for us, we're constantly looking at ways to operate our existing facilities, we call it silver low-hanging fruit. We've done a great job tackling our lighting systems with LEDs, our next big step, and you'll see a lot of it in the warrants, is our existing mechanical units. The air conditioning and heaters, as we replace those with much more efficient units, especially as we get hotter, hotter in the fall, colder in the winter, run those more, it's gonna save us a lot of consumption there. But other than that, no, it's, it's just a goal to continue to find ways to save, as, as the technology gets more efficient and opportunities present themselves, we're always on the lookout.
Thank you, anyone else have a question?
We're at three.
I was about to ask Kelly to ask her one another one, okay, so with that agreement, we can move to board number, board policy number thirty-five eleven point one, Jeff, the floor is yours.
Thank you, again, this is another new policy, going back to the green school policy, another component of it being our waste management. This would be something that promotes ways for us to be more efficient in our use and how we recycle our waste. I will say that we have a great partnership with waste management, where they can come on and do educational activities with our students, obviously, in a normal year where it's, where they would come on our campus. And it's something that is part of the entire picture of sustainability, it's not just water, electricity, but it's also our, our waste management and the education component that Clerk Osborne had mentioned before.
Any questions on this policy? Thank you for bringing this forward, Jeff.
Carol, I wanted to know, are we doing anything, Jeff, with the, with the food, like the restaurants that have the yellow cans?
Yes, we are, we actually started working on the yellow bags, you'll see, they go in, the difference is you won't see yellow dumpsters, per se, at our school sites. However, we put the yellow food bags, the compost bags, we call them, in the recycle bin where they're sorted by waste management, but something that we got from them, and we implemented about, I want to say, two or three years ago.
Thank you.
Some great questions, any other questions? Okay, with that agreement, we're gonna move to the next board policy, which is thirty-five thirteen point three, Mr. Baco, free schools, it's current, there are no recommended changes, but are there any questions or comments? Jan, you'll, you'll just have to speak up, because I can't see, if you have a hand, I'll look for your unmute. With that agreement, we're gonna move to the next policy. Just thirty-five thirteen point four, drug and alcohol-free schools, it is current as well, so there's no recommended changes. Any questions? We're gonna move forward to board policy thirty-five thirteen point four, actually, that drug and alcohol-free school, sorry, thirty-five fourteen, environmental safety, it's also current, so if there are any questions? I'm gonna ask Jeff, we just looked at that one too, okay, next is board policy thirty-five fourteen point one, which is also current, so there's no recommended changes. I don't see any hands up, with that agreement, we'll move to board policy thirty-five fifteen, which is campus security, we recently changed that one as well, are there any questions? There are no recommended changes on this one, okay, that brings us to the next policy for discussion, it's board policy thirty-five fifteen point two, disruptions, and Jeff, the floor is yours.
Thank you, this is an existing policy, however, there are some changes that were recommended with the new CSBA update that you can see in the green text there. The only other change that we're proposing is our current policy has a section at the bottom called safe school zone, which seems somewhat out of place. It's essentially just speaking to the requirements of a possession of firearm within so many feet of a campus or a dangerous system instrument, and it seems like that's, while that could cause a disruption, we didn't specify any other causes of a potential disruption, and it's something that is, we're protected with law already, and so we're proposing just to update policy with the CSBA section provided above.
Thank you for looking at it that way, are there any questions or comments? Don't see any hands, so that, with that agreement, we're gonna move on to the next policy, thirty-five fifteen point four, and Jeff, this is you.
Yeah, this is another update to an existing policy, you can see the posed retraction of the red font there, the first paragraph with the addition from CSBA. The one major change that's been added to this policy having be that reward section in an effort to find the missing or stolen property or suspect in, related to the damages, there's a reward section that's been added, and it's for the board to consider. All of it would be current practice minus rewards, we haven't been in an instance where we've offered a reward during my time here.
And is that something, the flexibility of having something is helpful?
Yeah, I would say it's helpful, and it's something that the board would have to give authority to do prior to moving forward with, so as long as still instills a power within the board, provides us flexibility, so we don't have to add it later in anticipation or trying to go forward with a reward program. In anticipation or trying to go forward with a reward program without a layer that would delay the potential. Effectiveness of it.
Any questions or comments? Is that for Mark or Jason?
I think we're missing a. I don't know, Mark, Mark, maybe you can help me understand unless maybe gamut's missing something, but the. It says at the, the new paragraph, right above rewards, it states, however, this policy shall not. Shall not apply to a student who is a current or former homeless or foster child or youth. What does or youth mean? Former homeless or foster child?
Yeah, I think it's home homeless youth or foster child is the typical terminology. Why it's worded that way, I'm not. I'm not sure.
I think they may have, yeah.
That would exempt everyone.
That was my, that was my concern. It's all of our youth.
Any other questions or comments?
I was just gonna make a comment that the sentence there, the new one that talks about the willful. Mistreatment of a, of a, what is it saying there? The willful misconduct of a student to damage district property. I think with so much technology out there. I am appreciative of the word willful in there because things do just get damaged. When we have young children with technology and so much of it, like, you know, the water gets spilled or it gets dropped. So. I'm just really appreciative of the district not. Coming down on all of those young children with all those devices. So anyhow, I just want to make that comment.
Appreciate that. Penalizing children for being children. Oh, Mark, just hand up.
Yes, we're charging their parents a couple hundred bucks every time something gets accidentally dropped.
Yeah, I was just gonna comment that. Kelly's comment is actually. References something that has been a big issue at. The CDE in recent years, because this is one of the list of eighteen permissible fees and charges. But they have focused in on the, the word willful. And so if it's accidental. You're not allowed to, no matter how negligent a student might be, you're not allowed to. Collect that, that, collect money for the damages unless it's willful.
Great, yeah, thanks for that.
Do you want them to grow and learn?
Yeah, I know technology has changed what we're dealing with as far as more equipment. But it seems in our district, it's really been the big items, like when students decide to jam the locks. As a prank at the school, something that really ends up costing the district a lot of money. The large piece of equipment in the empty pool. I mean, there's been not very many things. We've been pretty lucky. But I think that, I think we've always been pretty fair with students as far as accidental damage. I don't know, in your time here, would you agree with that, Jason?
Yes, yes. I've seen far, far worse, speaking of cars and cars and chickens being put out in the quad, that kind of thing. Yeah, luckily, you know, we, we're pretty straightforward. We typically give students, other than if the doubt in most instances. Though, you know, a student who is a repeat offender, you know, breaks the screen two times, the type of thing. Someone, you may have one of those in your household. I do. You, you end up paying for the screen replacement cost. But, you know, traditionally, you know, we, we do give students that after the doubt. Give them one jail, get out of jail free card. Though, if you see a student using it to, as a frisbee, that would be, you know, willful misconduct, right? And so we, we do address that. That type of behavior. But I haven't seen anything too egregious that I'd seen in other districts, thankfully.
And I'm gonna call on Chad, but before I do, Jason, sometimes it's not a frisbee. It's like a camera just floating through there.
And after Chad, we hit time.
I know, sorry.
I'll be really quick. I, I think that wording should be homeless child or foster youth. Usually foster youth is what goes together. Homeless children or child. So I think we have those two reversed by, based on previous.
And of course. We didn't agree on that. So, okay, thank you, Chad. And with that agreement, I know you're leaving that, Victoria. The next policy is current, since the board policy thirty five sixteen, it's current. There's no recommended changes, but if there are any questions, it's emergency disaster preparedness plan. Question? Okay, with that agreement, we're gonna move to board policy thirty five sixteen point five, emergency schedules. And Jeff, this is you.
Thank you. This would be a new policy for us. The best example I can give, it's short and very straightforward, but the best example I can give on when this policy would be implemented would be back when we had the. The small fire behind Top of the World Elementary School and we had to close school. And in doing so, the. To make up for those lost instructional minutes, we didn't actually have to do that because of the situation. We filed a specific form with California Department of Ed. It's called the Form G thirteen A, which allows us to cancel school due to that emergency. And it's something that. We won't deal with often, hopefully, and we haven't. And, but it is, I think, an important policy to have on. So that we can have something to back up the decisions we make as we deal with potential emergencies in the future.
Appreciate you bringing this forward. Are there any questions or comments? Having evacuated from that fire. Jim, I thought you had a question. Okay, you just sent me there for a second. Okay, so with that agreement, we're moving to board policy. Three, five, three, zero, risk management insurance.
Thank you. This would be a new policy again, just stressing the importance of not only having coverage, but making sure that it's economical in nature. And that we're doing our, our best to mitigate the potential risks, hence lowering the cost of coverage. We do work with what would be considered a JPA. To use a skip for our liability insurance coverage. So it does match practice. And it is something that we are cognizant of and we do track on a annual basis to make sure that our insurance costs aren't going up at a rate that we can afford.
Everyone is appreciative of that. Are there any questions or comments?
Jeff, does the rates adjust here like it would on workers' comp based on our actual claims?
They do. They're based on claims as well as potentially new facility. So, for example, we added the new restroom concession building at the high school at the stadium. That would increase your insurance cost because you're covering more. Building space. Now, it'd be minimal, but it does. It's based on the current assets that you have insured in their age.
Great, thank you.
Go ahead, Jim.
Jeff, has the county ever decided to? Get a policy for all the school districts in the Cal State system, we never. We never held insurance because we were, we were so large and it would cost so much that we just really insured ourselves by. Having a pool of money available to, to cover claims.
No, it's a, it's a good question. So that would be the self insured model, which we're very small. So it's difficult for us to take that on ourselves. In referencing the county, that would look more like a JPA model, which we currently have with a skip. And most everyone in the county is insured through a skip. So while it's not formally a county program, I would say it's as close to one as you can get without being run through the county. But we have not, in any of our discussions, at least at CBO meetings, talked about forming our own JPA for insurance. Everyone seems to be fairly satisfied with. A skip or whoever their provider might be outside of them.
That's very good information. I would not suggest we do it for ourselves, but I thought. If we, we could do it as a group, but it sounds like we already are doing it.
Yes, it's just not specific to, it's not within the confines of just our county. It's through the group that's insured through a skip as a JPA.
Any other questions or comments? Thanks, Jeff. With that agreement, we're gonna move on to board policy thirty five forty, which is transportation. It's a current policy. There are no recommended changes. For their questions? And then Jimmy, you're at the top, so with your hand up, so new question for that or? With that agreement, we're gonna move to the next policy, which is also current, thirty five forty one point two. Are there any comments or questions on this, transportation for students and disabilities?
This one is current, but I'm going to change the his, her, if that's okay with the board.
Yes, please. And so with that agreement, we are gonna move to board policy thirty five fifty, which is food services, children. Program and Jeff, that's you.
Thank you. So this would be a new policy for our district. Again, this matches what we do. It is modeling the CSBA template. However, we do meet all the requirements for our nutrition service program. And it does specify the priorities that we've established in terms of serving fresh fruit and vegetables, locally sourced produce and. Nutrition supplies as well as. Looking at the costs associated. Now, I will say that this is a little bit, this is general enough where it shouldn't have an impact as we move forward with the universal meal program. Or providing students regardless of their socioeconomic status, the two free meals a day. But it does help specify at the board level, the policy of the procurement of the supplies we use to feed our, our kids, which is important.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments?
Jeff, do you foresee a continued? Interest in the nutrition program with the, the universal free meals for this coming year? I. I thought you had saw an uptick last year, but I'm curious whether you guys are forecasting that for this year.
I do, based, and that's again, based on last year's data, data. So thank you, Clark Osborne, for bringing that up. We, we did notice that as. The year went on last year, that the participant numbers in our lunch program. Increased as the year went on at all levels, elementary, and then once secondary came back, we saw the same thing from month to month. An increase in how many students were receiving meals. So I would anticipate this year, we would see the higher. Higher. Potentially grows as it goes on again.
Okay, yeah, and I think it ties back also into the question that member Vickers asked about the, the food waste. And the yellow bag program, because as more children are participating in our, our district nutrition program. And not just the food waste, but the packaging, we'll see more of that as well versus them taking their containers and their. Trash and their leftover food home, which would be common for those bringing lunch. Okay. Are we preparing to staff and to change anything for next year's nutrition program, knowing that?
No change in staffing as we were able to provide it last year effectively. However, we're always looking at new things. One thing we started last year was looking at. A potential new food service provider. I wouldn't call them a consultant per se, but they would help enhance and potentially pull off the state nutrition program and provide our own. But it would still meet all the nutritional requirements, but that's in early development right now. It's something that, like everything else, we're always.
Yeah, yeah, okay, great. Thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments? Not see any hands. So with that agreement. So with that agreement, we're gonna move on to the next policy, which is thirty five fifty one, food services. It's a current policy. There are no recommended changes. So if there are any questions or comments. Okay, so with that agreement. See, hence, we're gonna move to board policy thirty five fifty four, which is also current. Other food sales, there are no recommended changes. Are there any questions? See any hands? This brings us to board policy thirty five fifty five, nutrition program. And Jeff, this is for you to introduce.
Thank you. Very small change here to an existing policy that we already have. It has to do with additional contact information that was provided. In this, through CSBA's template, everything else remained the same. It was just simply adding the new contact info in the section provided. And you can see it in green there in the policy.
Great, thank you. Any questions or comments? So with that agreement, this brings us to board policy thirty five eighty, which is also current. There are no recommended changes. Are there any questions or comments? It's three oh five. I thought we could take a quick five minute break before we jump into board policy four thousand. See you guys back at three ten. I'd like to re-adjourn the meeting at three twelve PM. And Victoria, is there anyone wishing to speak on the review and discussion of board policy four thousand series this afternoon?
There is not.
Thank you. That will jump right in and start with board policy four thousand, concept and roles. This policy is current. There's no suggestions for changes. If there are any questions, anyone participating or comments? Please raise your zoom hand or jump in. That, we're gonna move to board policy four thousand seven, employment. And Jason, is it you or Mike?
Mike.
Sorry, I didn't check first.
Yes, thank you very much. All right, so that's four thousand seven. It is. We're proposing to replace it with four one one two eight. Really just updating it and aligning it with CSBA's current, current model. There is, Victoria, there is a his, her in paragraph two that we need to catch.
Okay, thank you.
But again, just, CSBA did not have four, four thousand seven, so it's aligning with the one they do have.
Are there any questions or comments? Okay, with that agreement that we're gonna move this forward, we'll propose to leave retirement. Is this to board policy four zero one five, reimbursing of expenses for employee candidates? And Mike?
Yes, so with this one, again, this policy does not exist. CSBA does not have this policy. We're proposing to, to delete it. And is not a current practice at all for us to reimburse employee candidates as well.
Thank you for that. Are there any comments or questions? See any hands or anyone unmuting? So with that agreement, we're gonna move forward to bring it back forward to retirement. We're moving to board policy four zero one six.
Yes, thank you. Again, this is a recommendation of, CSBA again, does not have policy four zero one six. They do have policy four one one seven. Point two. So we're looking to, the recommendation is to delete the whole policy and replace it with four one one seven two. It, you know, the formatting is slightly different, but the content is, is pretty, pretty identical.
I don't see no hands. Comments. So with that, we'll move forward with that agreement.
Oh, and I'm sorry, with that one, Victoria, I apologize to his, her in the first paragraph that I missed.
And that will move forward with. Board policy, sorry, four zero, I just lost my place, four zero two zero, drug and alcohol free workplace. So I had Mike.
Yes, so this policy is up to date, except for some updating of federal codes in the court decision. So there's a couple additions in the, in the bottom.
Thank you. For those, simply to the simple changes. My guess, the next board policy is four zero three zero.
Carol. Can I ask Mark if forty twenty is up to date with some of the marijuana? Still on here. I know there's been some, some issues with this in the workplace where maybe it's not covered because of the difference between state and federal mandates.
Yeah, it is up to date is the short answer.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, with that agreement, that's my just board policy forty thirty. And Mike?
Uh, yes, so if you'll see, there's just a couple just minor updates to the policy that was, that were not currently part of it. So for per CSBA's recommendations from their, their policy, we just brought those in and made some other minor grammar changes.
Any board questions or comments? Mark, I can see you reading. I wasn't sure if you're going to jump in there. Okay, so with that agreement, we're going to move on to board policy four zero three three. Like patient accommodations.
Yep, this policy is current. No recommended changes.
Thank you. And then the next policy is board policy forty forty. For you.
Yes. So as I got into this policy, I was realizing that the CSBA mono policy was it was just, it was, it was, it was written much better. And we had a lot of information in our previous employees' policy that actually exists in our was it the technology use agreement as well as the employee handbook, the sections related to talking about under online internet or in the old policy, online internet services related to the, the district will have a basically a firewall. And then we had a specific sentences related to the use of cellular phones and mobile, mobile communication devices in this board policy. But that is covered in our, very clearly in our employee handbook. So our recommendation was to, to take the, the formatting and then the current recommended CSBA policy and adopt that as our, as our policy in replacement of the previous.
Are there any comments or questions?
Policy number stays the same. Mike, the policy number is the same.
I guess I believe it. Yes, it is.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Jim.
Am I right? Under use of cellular phone or mobile communication device, that that first sentence is accurate? Employee shall not use a cellular phone or other mobile communication device for personal business by on duty, except in emergency situations or during scheduled work breaks.
That was in the old policy. That's correct.
So are we continuing that or getting rid of it?
Well, we, it's that, those are the pieces that we got that did not exist in the current CSBA policy, which we're getting rid of because the appropriate use of cell phones is covered in our employee handbook. So there wasn't, it wasn't a need to have it live, have that level of specificity within a board policy when we have it existing in our, in our employee handbook. And we use that as our guide when, when you know, for employees following, you know, appropriate.
So is, is this staying in or being taken out?
It's taken out. It does not exist.
Thank you.
In, in the one you see in private, it's taken out.
Thank you.
The entire header that says use of cellular phone and those two sentences below are taken out. The header that said online internet services in the first paragraph was taken out. The rest of it, although it's written slightly different, the rest of it is, is, is carrying into the new one. It's just, it's just written differently.
Thank you.
And so it's easier to have the new forty forty replace the old forty forty? Mike?
Yes, yeah, it just, it was, it was a lot cleaner that way.
Are there any other questions or comments on this? Employees of technology? I don't see anything. Okay, so with that agreement, we're going to move forward to board policy forty one hundred. And this policy is current, so there are no recommended changes. Are there any questions? Not see any hands. So with that agreement, we'll move to the next policy, which is board policy forty one oh two. Mike?
Uh, yes, well, Victoria put up on screen. So again, this policy does not exist with CSBA. Our recommendation is to, to propose deletion of this policy.
And is the information in this policy covered in other areas?
When you're talking about professional growth, yeah, that's, all of that is covered in our, our contracts.
Oh, Jim, go ahead. Or Jim, is your hand up from last time, or is it a question? So with that agreement, we'll move to the proposed deletion of forty one oh two and move forward to board policy forty one oh three. Go ahead, Mike.
Yes, so again, this is a policy that you'll see this with certificated management team as well as the classified management team. This policy does not, CSBA does not have this policy. Our recommendation, recommendation is deletion. Part of the reason is, as there's changes in staffing, it would, it would force us to, or with, with increasing of positions, it would, it's constantly having to be revised. The, the other piece is with, with the salary schedule, you actually have all of this information, the, the designation of who's on this certificate management team, the classified management team is all on the district salary schedule that gets updated and board approved every single year. So you're, you're really, you're proving the information there. And that's, that's a much easier and living document versus having a board policy that we would have to change as well if any changes were made. So that's our recommendation for deletion.
And since we've seen this come up many times already, and it usually brings me more questions, right, than answers, I couldn't agree more. But let's see if any of our fellow board members have questions or comments on it.
Any, any changes to these teams come through the board for board approval anyway, so.
Right. Like with that, with that agreement, we're gonna move on to the next board policy, which is board policy forty one oh four. I'm like, that's you?
Yes, this policy, we are, the CBA, CSBA does not have this policy. They do have policy four one four three point one. And we are asking for this policy to be deleted and to be replaced by four one four three, which is more, more up to date and, and more robust and, and much clearer than, than our current policy.
There any questions or comments? See anyone? Okay, so with that agreement, we're gonna move that forward and move to board policy four one eleven recruitment inspection. Oh, and this one is current, so there's no recommended changes. But if there are any questions, Mike's happy to answer them. Mark. Let's see any questions or comments? So with that agreement, we're going to move forward to, this is board policy forty one twelve point four, forty two twelve point four, forty three point four, forty three twelve point four, of examinations. Mike.
Yes, and again, with, with these we have, this, these policies do not currently exist. So I lost my train, I lost my, my place. So CSBA does not have this, this board policy, but it does have an A R. And our recommendation is to delete, delete the policy and create, and adopt the current A R.
And do we currently have an A R in this as well, or do we just have policy?
I don't remember. I have to verify with the board matrix.
That's, that's fine. I don't have it. I closed it, so I don't have it, so. Are there any other questions or comments?
I believe it says we have it, an A R.
In the.
Hopefully policy and create current A R.
Mike, I have a question unrelated to that. This mostly covers TV tests. Is there any language that should be added in light of the, all the COVID testing? If we're going to be changing it or any other more broad language, it's really, I think I read all the way down to the, we had mental examination, TV test, and then I forgot what was in the middle paragraph.
Yeah, yeah, this one, if there's nothing that we're there's nothing that we're mandating when it comes to, you know, COVID related, like with vaccinations and whatnot. So it's, we're collecting information from employees and, and adherence with, you know, caloa guidelines in relation to, it gives them flexibility with their, with, with wearing a mask, but I don't see anything that's, would need to be added, you know, that's going to be kind of a, a permanent thing moving forward.
Okay, like a, not even on a vaccination status, but just on a testing like post exposure. We don't need anything in there, not in here, because the policy is going away, but in the A R.
Well, potentially, but also Dr. Keller is working on an A R. I forget the exact number, maybe the infectious disease one, he's looking to make some change in relation to with students with the ma- mask exceptions in that, in that process for how you navigate that process. So that, that those pieces are going to be weaved into, to a different, a different A R.
Yeah.
That might be.
Something to consider.
That's right, Mark might be a bit better answer to the question too, if there's something language wise.
I, in my experience is that districts are not necessarily amending their A Rs or their policies due to the temporary although it seems endless at times, but due to the temper, temporary nature of this, there's a lot of written protocols and a lot of procedures put in place that are put in writing, but I haven't seen amendments to the informal administrative regulations or policies on the subject.
I guess if those guidance were becoming permanent, right, we're assuming they're all temporary. I guess if they become permanent, then that would be something you're looking at. That's that line mark with.
Yeah, I think so. A lot of these things that, you know, the ink is fairly dry on them before they, before they change.
Okay, okay, thanks. And then Jim, you have your hand up. Sorry, I didn't see that.
Are, are we able to require all of our employees to be vaccinated the way that private companies are, even Kaiser is doing it for all their employees?
I don't know if Mark or Jason, who, who wants to answer that one?
Yeah, I, I think the answer to that is yes, but it would also be subject to collective bargaining requirements at, at, at least on the impacts and effects. The, a purb decision just actually recently came out right at the onset of the pandemic. The, maybe, I don't know if it was a campus or system wide, but the university, the regents of the University of California required flu vaccinations. And Herb said that the decision to, to mandate them was not negotiable, but you have to negotiate the impacts and effects. So I think the same, the same rationale would apply with a, a COVID vaccine. But you couldn't announce the policy and implement it the next day or week. You'd have to leave time for, for negotiations to occur.
Well, is, is this a policy that we could pull and see if, depending upon the board wants to do this? To give the superintendent the, the authority to negotiate with our unions to put this into place before the fall so that we can open?
I'm not sure this, this would be the policy that well, I guess health examinations, it, it could be, but and I'm, and I haven't seen the CSBA.
It's so passe in some ways.
I haven't seen, I haven't seen it under what board policy, if, if any, they're using to justify. I know there's some districts that have been talking about requiring it as the so we can look into that, Jim, and, and circle back because it, and find out where it would fall. I, I don't think it's this, because this is being expected to move to an administrative regulation. There's, there's probably another actual policy and/or the board simply could state that that's the intent. And that, you know, direct staff to to engage in collective bargaining around the effects of doing so. So we are happy to, we'll look into that and, and circle back in a weekly update. And then we do have a, a meeting next Tuesday. That was originally going to be a board policy meeting, but we're converting it to a meeting to talk about kind of the twenty one, twenty two school year and some of the things that we have to do around independent studies, et cetera. So we can, it could be part of that discussion for next week.
Jason, we have to have that come forward as a board item and discuss that to see if there was a board majority that wanted to even address that issue.
Yeah, that's why I think bringing it up next week and in the terms of the conversation around twenty one, twenty two school year. And then we can get some direction from stat, from the board next week, if that is the intent of the board for us to bring something back for the consideration. We could do that, obviously, based off that feedback. Right now, we shouldn't, we don't, aren't having that discussion because we're not in a position to have that discussion. It's on agenda, have that discussion, but because we're looking to have the agendas for next week's meeting, that topic of just COVID nineteen, twenty one, twenty two school year, et cetera, protocols. That would be a potential protocol. And so I can circle back with Mark and talk about what that might look like.
And on a side note, Jan, you had asked if, if we had a current A R for that previous policy we were discussing. We do not.
But, but the language in the actual board policy that's being presented here is the language in the administrative regulation. So it's simply taking the BP portion, just changing the title and making it an admin, right? But the same content is in, will be once in A R. So just so you know, as we move away from it, it's not going to be a, a watered down A R. It'll can still have the intent around making sure that our employees have the right examinations to be employed.
Thank you for that. I'll look on that. I know we're past three minutes, Victoria. Let's all the chat on that.
So with that, I messed, I messed up on the next policy four one one two point six one. It is posted on our website. But I did not make any reference to deleting it or creating the A R, and I did not attach it to the list of board policies. So my fault.
Well, and if we need to bring it back another time, if somebody needs to see it outside of us, in our own individual devices, let's see, we could do it without doing that. So with board policy four one one two point six one employment references. Mike, can everybody see it on their own screen and discuss it? Okay, doing that?
Yes. Again, this CSBA does not have this as a board policy. They do have it as an A R. And our recommendation is to delete the board policy and then adopt the CSBA's A R.
Jason, would the same apply where you're really just taking the same, the policy and making it the A R? Okay.
Yeah, correct.
And then Jim, you have your hand up as a reference to this. And then Mark.
Sorry.
That's okay. And then Mark, do you see any issues of when, like when CSBA suggests that we've, you know, I get we say the thirty thousand foot, and some of this does seem much more detailed like A R. But do you see any issues of when we, anything we should think about in general when we move something from policy to A R? I'm hopeful one.
Not, not specifically. I mean, I think you just hit, kind of hit the nail on the head of the, you know, the ten thousand foot level versus the day to day operations level. And the day to day operations level are typically in administrative regulations and not the, the broader policy statements. And then a qualification of that would be circumstances where the ed code or other law requires you to have a policy and requires certain content of policy that can, that can be very specific. Intra district transfers is one example of that, that there's an ed code provision mandating a policy and that it contains certain things that are pretty detailed. That's one where you'd need to have it in a policy. But otherwise, typically administrative regulations are the, the operational documents.
Perfect, thank you. Other, and other questions or comments on employment references? Not seeing. So with that agreement, we're getting, moving that to A R, we're going to move to the next policy item, which is four one one two point eight, employment or relative. Employment or relatives. Mike, this is you.
Yes, as we discussed earlier, this is the recommended CSP policy to replace four zero zero seven.
Are there any questions or comments on this one? Yeah, somehow I shut my own document. I gave a question on that, but I can, it wasn't anything substantial, so I could bring it back. It wasn't legal, but I remember correctly, so I brought it back. With that agreement, we're going to move on to board policy number four one one two point nine. And this employment notifications is current, so there's no recommended changes, but if there's any questions. Everyone here or Jason, everyone else, you have a question? No, see, so with that agreement, we're going to move on to a board policy four one one three, which is assignments and also current. If there's any questions. See any? So with that agreement, we're going to move on to board policy four one one seven point two. Resignations, Mike, this is you.
Uh, yes, thank you. As as we discussed, this is the policy that's we're going to propose to replace BP four one four zero with. With this policy four one four one four three point one. Whatever the right one, I'm sorry. Yeah, this is four one one seven point two. So we're replacing four zero one six with this. With this policy. And again, just. No substantial changes, just more in line with the CSP policy.
Oh, sorry, Mark's following the rules. Go ahead, Mark.
Yeah, the highlighted portions are suggested, suggested additions that I inserted. A lot of, a lot of my suggestions, you know, arise out of of nightmare scenarios that I've dealt with in the past. And I had one where an employee just announced, I quit very vocally and walked off the job. And then two weeks later, said, I want my job back. And a judge said, your policy says resignation shall be in writing. And since he never put it in writing, he never resigned. So a verbal resignation is something that it can be offered by an employee and can be accepted. And then the second one is there, there's case law that that says an employee can. Rescind a resignation before it is accepted or before the effective date has passed. So say, for example, an employee submits a written resignation on Friday afternoon. And says, I I resign effective at the close of business today. And it's not accepted until the following week. Technically, the employee has lost the ability to revoke that resignation because the effective date came and went. So if you include that in there, it incorporates that, that aspect of the law also.
Thank you for putting those. Kelly, go ahead.
And Mark answered my question, which is why we have verbal in there. You gave a great example, so.
And then Jim, go ahead.
So the moral of the story is as soon as someone tells you that, put it in writing that I accept your resignation and good luck.
Yes.
That's what, that's, that's what I always did in the past.
Yeah, in 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 the law, i- in the law, a resignation is is viewed like a contract and a resignation is an offer. And that's why you technically, you want to have, just like you want to have some kind of formal notice that you have accepted a contract offer. You've accepted an offer to withdraw from the contract of employment. So that's, that's a typical practice is to make sure it is formally accepted.
And and Mark, is it considered written if it's, you know, like on Facebook, on social media?
Say again, it.
Is it considered written if it's on social media? If someone tweets it or what?
I I, I, I mean, I think so, if if. Yeah, that wouldn't be a a traditional way of announcing your resignation, but but yeah, I mean, it's much, much stranger things have happened for sure.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, so with that agreement, we'll, you know, moving to the next policy number. Four one four three point one. Mike, this is you.
Yes, thank you. As we shared earlier, this is the policy that we're looking to replace. Four one zero four, the public notice personnel negotiations. This is the most updated CSP policy. Interested in replacing the previous one just.
I just have too many devices open. I'm sorry, I'm. Any questions or comments? See any hands or hear any voices? Okay, so with that agreement, then we'll be replacing forty one oh four with forty one forty three point one. In the discussion, we'll be replacing that, but we'll move it forward, have discussion in the first meeting. And we're going to move on to board policy four three oh four.
Yes, thank you. Again, this is, as we discussed earlier, with the same policy related to certificate management team, this is the classified management team. Board policy and CSP does not have either of these policies, where recommendation is to delete this as well. But again, as all this is captured in our management salary schedule document that goes to the board every year.
Any questions or comments, members? So with that, we're gonna, with that agreement, we're going to move forward. We're going to move forward to. The next section, which is work policy six one five eight. Victoria's very one wishing to speak on the review and discussion of work policies, six one five eight, independent study this section.
There is not, sorry, I can't see it when I'm screen sharing.
I don't know how you keep all of the technology organized and us all organized, so. It's a break for you. Since there's no comment, that's going to have us come right into a board policy six one five eight. And I think Chad, that's you then.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, this one's coming forward. We're bringing six thousands and five thousands forward later, but this one's coming forward a little bit timely. Assembly bill one thirty was passed in July and and it's related to independent study. And some of the changes that were required to be done through a board policy change. This is essentially what was previously distance learning policy that was put into place a year ago. And so they've taken a lot of the parameters around, which was our virtual academy and placed those into independent study. And look at that. And so we're required to pass a board policy. Some of this stuff was in administrative regulation previously. But because there were so many additions, I think there's eleven new requirements with related to independent study, we're bringing this one forward. Just as a new, as a, to replace the old one, which was much, the board policy was much shorter, although most of what was in the old board policy is carried over into into this one. It's almost, the difference is quite a bit, so, so it's added this, this piece here. If you look at, if you're looking at the policy, there's some general requirements related to how we have to operate independent study. Which will be this year's version of distance learning or virtual academy. So with that, sharing that here today with, to be updated. And then we're continuing to work on this option, which we'll be bringing forward and talking more at, and next week.
Are there any questions or comments from fellow board members? Or for Mark or Jason, want to chime in?
We are not alone. Every, for the most part, I've seen every. School board is having to make adjustments based off of the new requirement. Yeah, independent study requirement. So we will be bringing this back. In a pretty rapid format here, because we need to get it approved.
Well, that, and that's what I was going to ask Mark, is this something that we can just, if we all. Move this forward now saying, we're in agreement to move forward, can we just bring it back to? Do we have to do it through our first read norms, or can we just bring it back to the next meeting? Vote on it, put it in place, it's there?
We can bring it back at the next meeting. At the very next meeting, I was the special meeting, long as it's agendas is an action item. And the board could waive second read and simply approve it at that time.
I show you on mute, Mark, but okay, perfect. And if there's something I have to say during that, I know you will write me a little legal, whatever I need to say. Okay.
Chad and or Jason and or Mark, the policy that we're looking at right now seems verbatim. Each item is referenced by ed code, so I don't know that we have much flexibility to remove anything. If that's the ed code that we're being required to pass, it would just be adding. Our Laguna Beach unified. Labor, if we wanted anything added to it, but am I understanding that correct? Because like when I'm looking at this six pages, it's all based in ed code.
And that is correct. We have, we're, districts are required to offer independent study in this form next year, and it's all done through ed code. So there's really not any significant changes that we could make to this. We'll be, we're working on how, and now we're spending our time working on how we're going to implement it. As all, as all boards and district offices are doing right now.
Okay, okay, thanks.
Go ahead, Mark. I, I think Mark is going to answer further, Kelly.
Yeah, and just a quick comment, I I I agree with what Chad just said. And and I've, I've gotten two calls on this issue from other districts. And both of them have been parents saying, I want a particular kind of independent study program. The, and the, this AB one thirty doesn't require that. It mandates that you have an independent study program. For the twenty one, twenty two school year that complies with the independent study statutes. But it doesn't require that you have a cafeteria plan of various options. It also says that. Districts can use a county office run. Independent study program. I don't know if OCD is planning on doing that. Or can use interdistrict transfer agreements to allow a student to take independent study in another district. I don't think many districts are going to do that. So that it provides some flexibility in in what districts do, but you're right, it is that the independent study. Laws and regulations have always been very detailed and very long. And so, you know, that you're, you're absolutely right in noting that this is all code and regulation driven.
Okay, and I, Chad, they didn't make for the, compared to last year's distance learning requirements. For the amount of daily live interaction and synchronous, synchronous instruction. Did the legislature make any changes to that by increasing or decreasing it? I I saw there was a, like a parent notice piece that seems different, like a conference before. I don't remember that as part of what we had to do last year. But anything on the actual instructional side that changed?
There's, there's the daily live interaction, which I guess depends on what changed to what. So like an independent study, you used to not have to have a daily live interaction, but we did for distance learning last year. So those, so those, that part staying from distance learning, the daily live interaction and and synchronous instruction. There's a component to it that districts are kind of waiting on to see if there'll be additional language. Which references the amount of daily interaction or weekly interaction that they have to have, and it's a little different by grade level. And so there's, it just references having daily interaction. Does it say whether it has to be an hour or four hours or? So we're kind of waiting to see if there's more, if it's going to be more specific or if it's more general. And then allows districts to to personalize it to their community.
Okay, so comparing, because it's not really apples to apples, because independent study was something totally different last year. But compared to distance learning, were we required to do daily synchronous instruction at different levels by grade last year for the distance learning mandates?
Yeah, it was more general last year for daily interaction and all, and all grade levels. So here, for this, I think I'm looking at it right now, it's TK three is daily synchronous for all students. Four, four through eight is daily live and weekly synchronous. And the grades nine through twelve is weekly synchronous, so less, a little bit less daily interaction as you go up. It didn't have that differentiation last year, so it's a little bit, a little bit, there's a little bit more parameters to it, but it's not saying how much of that. Just daily or weekly is as specific as it is right now.
Yeah, frequency, not the interval. Okay, I got you. Okay, that helps. Thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments? And I think, Kelly, you're, you're right. A lot of these policies are so tied to ed code with very little flexibility of what we do in them. But I, because I joined, I thought there'd be a lot more, so legislators seem to be. Passing a lot more education code and laws. So we have nine minutes left. I know there are policies, there's the, the green policies that we wanted to go back to. We could spend the. The last nine minutes doing that. Were there any other policies anyone else wanted to go back to? Thirty five, ten. We'll go back to that and hook them up back up. And then Kelly, I know you had additional comments on that.
Yeah, I wanted to suggest, I'll just top in on the green school operations under number seven, which was our integrated pest management. City of Irvine has done some really good work here, and I wanted to suggest to the board for discussion. I like the language least toxic, but it would be great if we could use organic pesticides. Where possible, unless there's, you know, some economic or health and safety reasons not to. And then we would move on to EPA level, EPA grade pesticide. So that was one for suggestion. Does anybody have any issues with that? I know Jeff, we might already be doing that. Usually when I bring these up, you say, oh no, we're already doing that. We're only using organic pesticides.
That's what I was waiting for is what Jeff was going to say. I bring stuff up to you and he goes, yeah, yeah, yeah.
But I like our, I like the policy to match the practice, so I wanted to bring that up. Sorry.
And Jeff, does it match the policy, the practice and policy on that, on? The least toxic?
Yeah, so there's no set policy on it currently. We do tend to use traps, so we're not using anything toxic for pest management. It's very minimal in terms of our sites, but typically, and it's like our landscaping, we use all organic. Which really is just a lot of hand weed pulling now, since we don't use the roundup for the toxic weed inhibitors. So it'd be similar with our pest management. However, we don't have that in place. This does say using least toxic. So it does, you know, being feasible in terms of economically impracticable, depending on the the pest infestation that we're dealing with. I think it is sufficient, but whatever the board decides to do, it's it's a minimal. There's minimal costs associated with our current pest management, so even if we were to experience higher costs with using more restrictive, all organic. Or non-toxic materials and supplies, it would likely increase costs. I don't know exactly how much off the top of my head. But it's something we could do, and I wouldn't suspect it would be significant in terms of cost implications.
Well, I'm gonna watch the screen, Jason's face when I say this, because like for the traps, are the traps poison traps or the traps live traps? Because even though the poison, it's what?
They're bait traps.
They, yeah, so those aren't toxic to children, but they're toxic to the owls and the cocks and those predatory birds I'm watching. Or can be toxic to them.
And I think the way Irvine just did a, they did, they've been kind of leader in this space for the last four or five years. But they basically say they use organic pesticides where possible, and then if not, if there's a threat to human safety, right? Or significant economic risk, right, to property, then they would go to EPA level. And they go, so that's kind of that least toxic, but it kind of calls out that you're going to start with organic baits or organic pesticides. So that's one, one comment I had. And then in nine, just to kind of keep moving on, under nine A. And perhaps member Kelly would be interested in this as well. I thought about adding the word carpooling, so encouraging students to walk or bike to school or use district or public transportation or carpooling. That would reduce emissions. And then I wanted to explore. On the. Encouraging students to walk or bicycle to school. I wanted us to explore safer routes to school. I know we've talked a couple of times about e-bike safety. It's so bad. If there's, I guarantee this this coming September, we're going to see double the amount of e-bikes that we saw in June. And I think we need to partner maybe with the city to explore better, safer routes to school for those to encourage more biking. So that was one area. And then I wanted to consider maybe adding number twelve. Which would be a whole new area, which would be to encourage more participation in green school recognition programs. I know that would match past practice that we've done, but it might be nice in our board policy. To seek out and explore. Those. School recognition programs. And. I think we talked about the environmental literacy. Dr. Verloia pointed out a great place to put that in sixty one forty two. So that was my my last comment.
So on on car, so on the on the traps, on the traps, should circle back to traps if. Live trapping or something we could do is the first least best. Least toxic. That's great. And that's what that means to to Jeff. That's great. And I get that that doesn't really work. The second one on the carpooling, I don't know if we encourage carpooling. I don't know if it's Jason or or Mark. That that's something we're encouraging students to do if there's. I know when other schools encourage carpooling, they create apps for it. And I know we have the directory, school car directory, but I don't know. Hmm, if there's something we have to, if we, the board says we want to encourage it, if there's something that we have to do to. To facilitate that encouragement. And then if there's the liabilities of doing that. And. Safer routes, I can agree more with you. I think they are looking at those things. And then the recognition piece, I would think that if there's a place for that as a whole. Around recognitions or that in the ARs or anywhere else, that that would make more sense there than just in this one space. I worry about when. If it's something like that, then we have to go seek it in that policy. But I'd leave that to Jason to.
So I guess can we tackle the first ones? I don't. And I don't think Jeff, you feel. You know, any kind of concern regarding, you know, adding a little bit of language regarding. The pest management practices. Obviously, we can we can look to make some potential additions there, looking at.
Right.
Organic, right? And then. As relates to carpool, I I agree, there's a little bit of a but. You know. Having students carpool together with the rules being around, you know, students being able to drive each other. You know, that's one thing. Obviously, you have adults transporting elementary school students. That's kind of a different. Conversation. So I I'm not sure, you know, if it's something that we. Get involved in. I I'm I'm always hesitant to get involved in one more thing around trying to manage a carpool list. You know, I I don't know what the liability would be if we were, you know. Even if we had a. Statement that, you know, where we don't have any liability if something bad was to happen and and adult was to, you know, get a name of another family online and and then something bad was to happen to that student. You know, I would, I'm not sure if there would be liability. I know there's not if we don't aren't involved in it, but if we are, I'm not sure how what that would look like. So Jeff can follow up with with a skip on that. And see what what their perspective is. I did. I have talked with. Previously with Laguna Beach. P D on safer outs to school. We've had a lot of conversations around it. One of the obviously biggest challenges we have is we have. Predominantly, you know, one elementary school that is. Somewhat pedestrian and bicycle safe. We have one that is not that is outside of city limits as well. And then, you know, the the middle school and its location isn't necessarily is. Conducive either, driving a park. So we she and I did have a conversation a while back. I'll circle back with. Acting Chief Calvert and see where where things are at. In terms of. Exploring that further. And as.
Jason, I wanted to say on the language unsafe, I want to say language unsafe. I think I guess there are safety plan and other things too, not so much in the space.
Right, 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 right.
Okay, okay.
Yeah. And then last, I would say I'm very reluctant to. You know, staff time it takes to write up some of these grant, these awards is extensive. I think in the last Green Ribbon. Award. I would say the amount of staff time that went into it was significant. The amount of staff time that goes into most of these. Awards is significant. And so I think it's best left to staff to determine. Whether we should be applying for any kind of recognition, because there are all sorts of recognitions out there. Some that you have to apply for, some that simply, you know, like distinguished schools awards where you qualify, and then you have to write a. Report. Some of these are ones that you actually have to go out and and do, and it can be a lot of time to do so. And so obviously, we do have a public informations officer now who could help do some of that. But at the same time, I would not want to put it, I would not recommend that it be put into an actual board policy. But that's my two cents. I'll do.
Thank you for that. And then Mark, Mark has comments and then Jeff has.
Yeah, just a quick follow up on the issue of of liability. I agree with Jason. That, you know, there are questions about the issue of of liability. I think encouraging carpooling. In and of itself would necessarily increase, at least not significantly, poss potential liability. But I I've said before, in many circumstances, it it would increase the likelihood that you get sued if something happens. Because not every lawsuit is 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 viable. Not every lawsuit is has a strong legal argument, but. Things like that give clever plaintiffs attorneys. Ideas about going after what are considered to be deep pocket public entities with personal injury lawsuits. And so that's another consideration, not necessarily. Liability, but avoiding the lawsuit in the first place ways in favor of, you know, kind of not going, not going down that road.
Is not a lawyer, the liability I meant in that one, in the bigger broader way. Yeah, Jan, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to say I have some real concerns. Can you hear me? You can't hear me.
You're breaking up.
I didn't. Does it? Okay, so connection is unstable.
Now. I can hear you now. Yep.
Okay, I just have some real concerns about determining safe routes to school. Just was gonna comment and I certainly tag in on Jason's that. Very limited routes that we could recommend as being safe to get to school. You really can't take Park Avenue approach out of the majority of our Thurston students. So I'm just, I would, you know, Mark weighed in on that. I'd be really concerned about as a liability issue. The. I want to ask Jeff a question. When you said we use bait traps, do we contain the animals that are caught or is that a bait that's put out and they consume and leave?
No, for the most part, they would remain trapped in our pest provider or pest management company would deal with them.
Okay.
Again, it's very rare. I I'd have to I'll go back and pull the data for the first read on this item.
Okay. But that satisfies the concern that other animals in the predator line then consume the poisoned critter. Because that was that's the underlying concern. So if we're if we're capturing them with the bait, then that solves that.
Yes, and I remember Vickers, we we share your concern on that. Dealt with a lot of that back in my last district on the central coast. A lot of times when you use poison, there are a lot of hawks and owls that. The dead ground squirrels and be poisoned as a result. And that's not something we want to do. I want to be very focused and targeted with pest management. That's one of the. Areas and priorities that we have there. So I'll follow up with the exact data, potential cost implications, all all that ready at the first read.
Thank you. And I didn't know you could bait them and capture them. Dan, go ahead. Is there something else? Yeah, ever since I got pregnant, I don't look at any of that stuff. Can't. Be grateful to my husband. Are there other questions, Jan? Otherwise, Jeff, I know still has comment too.
No, I'm fine. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Jeff, go ahead on your follow.
Just really quickly, thank you. To piggyback on what Dr. Gloria was mentioning with staff time on those grant or not the grant, but the award or the recognition applications. The one referenced the green school award for top of world elementary school was part of a larger staff initiative. It was part of a legal rocket ready program. So we had teachers leading that charge, and it was part of what they were doing with their students. So. It was worth the significant investment. I know we spent a lot of time on that application, but it was tied together with the greater academic good for the school and the students working on that. So to just blanketly go for any award, there's probably. Hundreds that we could be eligible for. It would be difficult because just knowing the amount of time that went into that, it was it was a pretty big strain on us.
Thank you for that reminder. I forget about the rocket ready projects. Thanks. Hey, there any other questions or comments on this policy? Or any other policies before we wrap up? Looking. I don't see anything. So that will take us to five A. The next regular meeting will be Thursday, August nineteenth, twenty twenty one. And I had my whole will be hosting this other policy meeting, but we are not going to be hosting this other policy meeting on. Next week. And so with that, though, I do really want to thank Victoria, who's like an amazing wizard behind the scenes of everything board related. And both of Victoria and Jason for their document of policy knowledge and just. What's in them and where you find them. And they're so quick at it. Appreciate it. And everyone's work behind the scenes. I know Mike and Jeff, you guys had to do everything to prepare for this. And Chad. When we do have your six thousands is all going to be you. And we just appreciate all the work. It's a big undertaking. And Mark, for going through all the policies behind the scenes and. Also helpful. Thank you. And for all the board members to spend this time going through all the policies. Have them without you guys. So if that can have a motion to adjourn this meeting. Right, motion to adjourn it. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thanks, Jim. Victoria, can you please do a roll call?
Member Vickers?
Yes.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Clerk Osborne?
Yes.
President Norman did.
Yes. So the motion carries for zero. And the meeting is adjourned at four oh eight P M. Thanks, everyone.